Great.
All right, call meeting order at six oh two, I will rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right.
Your call.
Yes, Steve Dagola.
Here.
Ian McDonald.
Here.
Laura Blargen.
Here.
Lacey Oster.
Here.
Bruce Blargen.
Here.
Danny Erickson.
Here.
Matthew Ball.
All right, uh, district, together we engage, educate and empower all learners, bridging their passions to pathways to create successful futures and positively contribute to our local and global communities. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, second, all's in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, and to, uh, Louis, you are up for public comment.
Okay, so the superintendent wants a taxpayer-supported daycare. On the outside, daycares pay more.
Can you just say your name and address?
Okay, Louis Geran, twenty twenty-one State Road thirty-five, Somerset, Wisconsin.
Thank you.
Okay, so superintendent wants to start taxpayer-funded daycare. Outside, daycares pay more each property taxes, something school doesn't. So why would they need a hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars a year to run it if they're charging the same rates? How could a taxpaying daycare compete against that? And the schools they are showing that have daycares, they're all in Pope County. Somerset student numbers have been dwindling since two thousand ten eleven school year. That year, they had one thousand six hundred fifty-three students. Students enrolling out has been growing every year. Last year was a hundred and fifty-four. So if you took that hundred and fifty-four students in last year's enrollment number of fourteen sixty-three, that puts you at one thousand six hundred seventeen, still less than two thousand ten eleven. So the numbers at the school are going down, the village and township are going up. Here are some numbers from the St. Craig County Comprehensive Plan, going back to twenty-ten. Zero to four-year-olds is down thirteen percent. Five to nine-year-olds is down seven percent. Ten to fourteen-year-olds is up four percent. The ones having kids, twenty-five to thirty-four, is down twenty-four percent. The village population from twenty-ten to the first of this year went up six hundred and ninety-nine people. Township's population from two thousand ten to the first of this year went up four hundred and sixty-nine people. The group moving to Somerset, St. Craig County, the greatest group, is forty-five plus. They're coming without kids. So why does the school want to compete against taxpaying daycares? You got the track on auditorium, you said you needed to keep kids. How about working on the problem with the hundred and fifty-four kids leaving? And remember, your parent engagement survey, sixty-four percent said no. So I have a question. Are you going to fill this daycare with students from the outside that are not in Somerset School District? If so, that's completely wrong. Because government should not compete against taxpaying businesses, especially if they need taxpayer money to keep it afloat. Billing permit numbers are down. Last year, the village had forty-six permits. This year, eleven so far. The township last year had twenty-four, this year fourteen. So how about we fix the problems? Don't add to them? And how about doing a complete survey on this? It's a lot of money to get this thing started and going.
All right, um, next item is, uh, reports. So listening session summary, um, Danny, you were here? And Lacey, anybody here? And Lauren, anybody here?
Oh, yes, yes, there were, there was a family here. And, um, they, um, asked about DoorDash, uh, delivering food. Apparently, it was allowed at the middle school, but not at the high school, and they're wondering why. And asked if we have a policy about this, and as far as I know, we do not. So perhaps this is something that, uh, the high school staff could look into.
Was the family saying they wanted it to be at the high school?
Yes.
Okay.
But if you could just check into it.
Sure, yeah.
And, um, they also, um, expressed concerns about some racial bully. And I will share those details with you later so that you can contact the family in person. Or, you know, personally.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Lauren. Uh, superintendent update.
Um, yeah, so I have two things. Um, so I have Leslie Thomas and Dave, I kind of mentioned last meeting that they would be here to help kind of answer maybe some more in-the-weeds questions just regarding the current proposal. Um, not looking for any action, just continuing to provide some information. Um, if you click on the, um, presentation that's linked to the agenda, there are a few added slides toward the end. I highlighted the top of those in yellow. Um, so you could see which ones were added, the rest were still the same. Um, wanting to just kind of hit on a few things, either from some questions that I had received, um, you know, some feedback, those kinds of things, just trying to bring some more information to be able to answer some questions. Um, and then obviously, as I said, Leslie and Dave can help answer some things too, because Leslie's kind of the resident expert on all things childcare. So I want to draw your attention first to slide ten. If you want to go down to that one for me. We pulled together again, just, you know, some comparison in terms of just Fund eighty in general, in terms of, uh, districts around us and their utilization of that fund. This is not necessarily broken down into, um, what they use it for. Some of them use it for things very similar to like our school age care program. Um, some of them use it for obviously a whole wide variety of things, might be community ed. I didn't necessarily break it down into that level of detail, but just wanted to kind of show you a comparison in terms of how other districts or the fact that other districts are using, uh, Fund eighty for a variety of reasons. Um, if you go to the next slide, eleven, you know, we've had a lot of conversation internally about, um, just kind of rates and what does that look like? And how does that compare? Um, you know, Leslie, I'm going to have you kind of speak to this a little bit. Um, you've put a lot of work into gathering some comparisons and just kind of what does that look like? So you don't necessarily have to stand up there if you don't want to, but.
It'd be easier.
Yeah, you probably can't see.
So just in regards to this, so this is information that, um, I reached out to Childcare Partnership, which is the agency that works directly with DCF. It's considered our local resource and referral agency. They are located in, um, Eau Claire. But they are the ones that come out and do all of our pre-licensing and, um, answer any questions regarding, um, trainings. And, um, they pulled the information based on their data that is collected every, um, year. This was, uh, actually pulled on, um, June twenty-seventh. So this is most accurate as of June twenty-seventh. So these are the rates that are average, uh, maximum and minimum amounts for those age groups across St. Craig County. Um, they do not have a way of pinpointing just Somerset or just New Richmond or things like that. They just do a county overview. So then what I did was I took the county average and started at the zero to eleven months and calculated what the revenue would be if we were full capacity at each one of those levels. And then I took the maximum amount here and did the same thing, so you could see a range of income that could be brought in. So that's kind of in a nutshell what that represents. You know, if there's questions about that, or?
What was your operating cost again?
That was in a slide earlier. I don't remember the numbers specifically without looking at it.
What did you think, or is it?
How much was the operating cost? Oh, it's, it's later.
Yeah. And I'm going to touch on that again in just a second too.
No, thank, that's helpful, thank you. That was helpful, slide.
So I think as we've looked at, just, you know, again, kind of estimating and trying to zero in on, you know, if this was something that went forward, what would those rates look like? You know, um, a lot of the feedback beyond just, you know, the five or six that were on this presentation and talking to other districts even around the state that have done this, um, you know, kind of the constant theme was ensuring that you don't start too low. And, you know, really being cognizant of, you know, certainly trying to put it at a price point that's family-friendly, but also, you know, recognizing that this kind of is a separate entity and running it, um, you know, like a business to a degree. I'm going to kind of go to the next slide, just to kind of hit on a couple of the, the bigger questions that I've received. Um, maybe you've had the same, maybe these have been your own questions as well. Um, you know, but kind of the idea of, you know, our current school age care program, um, you know, is self-funded. It's sustained kind of all on its own, you know, so why would a potential daycare have to run in the red? And, you know, what I presented to you in kind of the, the slides below it essentially is almost worst-case scenario is the best way to describe it, that, um, the idea would be certainly a, a large investment upfront, um, you know, knowing that within a year, two years, three years, that the idea would never be to have an, a unlimited, um, number of years in terms of having that Fund eighty levy. The goal would be eventually for it to be able to break even. And then that second step would be then to have it, you know, be revenue generating on some level. Um, the districts that I've spoken to, uh, kind of range between, you know, two to four years in terms of, you know, the time it took them to be able to break even after that initial kind of investment. Um, but a lot of that conversation I've had with those superintendents really again wraps around fees. You know, from the get-go, I would say it, it probably is pretty close to possible of looking at how to break even. But that would be where the fees come in, right? That higher fees, right, give you a better opportunity to do that. Knowing that, a-again, the goal certainly isn't to have this sit in Fund eighty forever. Um, the reality is, you know, again, big investment upfront and then, you know, just like any other business, I suppose, it would take a little bit of time to be able to get back to either break even or breaking some, or gaining some revenue. But again, just looking at kind of the research we've done, what we've put together, I would say like the information I have on slide fourteen, was at least a, a reasonable starting point, but that's without looking at, you know, what would it look like if we put our, our rates on the high end versus that medium end? Because right now, that, this is kind of based off of that, that median, that median fee structure. You know, this incorporates ten full-time staff, uh, with full-time benefits, uh, which is obviously costly. Um, you know, so we could look at doing some things a little bit differently for staff, but there would be a bit of a trade-off there, which we've talked about, um, in terms of, you know, continuity for kids. It's easier to maintain staff full-time versus trying to piece staff together that are part-time. Um, but things like that could be looked at and certainly could be done. We kind of presented the, the Cadillac version in terms of what we think is best for children. You know, but there could be some ways to, to help navigate that too, so. Leslie, anything else that I'm kind of missing? Oh, I do have a, sorry, a few other questions on, on, uh, slide twelve. I kind of just addressed that second bullet point. Our proposal right now would be ten full-time staff. Um, you know, that would be dependent on obviously number of kids enrolled. That could go up, it could go down. And I did specifically have the question of, well, what would it look like if you hired part-time staff? Would that decrease costs? Um, it certainly could. Um, but again, we run into some of those issues in terms of, um, retaining staff and, and trying to piece that together versus having full-time staff, but it certainly could be done. Uh, one other question I had, um, someone asked about this boardroom and if that could be used or would be used for the program. So we've had a lot of discussions of trying to maximize kind of every square footage in this space. So our recommendation would be that this would become kind of a large motor indoor room, uh, for students. And by that time, we'd have a space such as the auditorium or somewhere in the other buildings that we certainly could run school board meetings. But I know Leslie had shared with me that, um, in all the programs she visited, that was a common theme that each of those spaces had in a large indoor, large motor area for kids to be able to, um, to work in. Right now, that wouldn't be possible unless we use this room. So ideally, this room would transition into part of that program and we would have to find a different spot for school board meetings. But, so.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Don't we, um, do we have grants for, is it just SKC that we have the grants for? We don't have.
Yeah, so right now, the ones that I'm emailing out to board members every month, that is a result of COVID dollars still. And, um, the efforts of, uh, the governor still trying to keep it on the docket as a long-term, um, option to help support programs stay afloat. As of right now, round five, which is what I just sent you today, I don't know if you saw the email, that is the last one that is secured in place, that'll go for, I think it's eight, we'll get eight payments for that. Outside of that, we don't have any answers as to whether or not it'll continue. From what I can tell and what, from what we've been emailed, is that plan on it ending. But there's still efforts in the background working to try to get something from a state level to help support programs. If that were to be the case and we open a childcare, they would also qualify for those funds. Um, so it's any childcare regardless of whether it's infants all the way up to schoolagers.
And we've looked for some too, you know, even just like for the startup of.
Yeah.
To, right, knock down that, that we have not found yet. If anyone listening knows or is aware of something, please send it to me, we haven't found it yet. But.
The, the, the top question, I don't know if it was actually, if you touched on that in terms of answering it, but probably the biggest piece of the difference between what school age is doing and what a childcare would do would be the number of full-time staff. And that's where the difference in the cost is coming, so.
Yeah.
Between, yeah.
I guess, yeah, I, I can see the upfront, you know, cost being supporter, being asked for to build out the space. Yeah, for me personally, I would think that we would want to run it so that we can be making money out of it and not have to keep. I know there was a, we don't know how many kids we would bring in. I think it'd be, I think I've heard from people that they want more daycare places in town, but there aren't enough and that they're going to Stillwater for daycare, or they're going to other places, the center or whatever. So I, and I think with the school, you drop your kid off at one spot, I, I think it'd be great. I just would, my goal would be that we're not paying for this for.
And that's our goal too. That's absolutely our goal. Um, I think when we put it together, it was, what would be absolutely ideal? If I could have everything I want to ask for to open a childcare, and that's what this looks like. Now, scaling that back and are there things we can look at? There are, there are. But there are a ton of moving parts that when you're not in the field, you're, you don't know that. And so please ask questions and I will do my best to answer with the best information I have in terms of making it simple and, and tangible in terms of how it would apply. But there isn't always just a black and white answer to, to a lot of the questions when it comes to, to operating a childcare. But, um, yeah, please, if you have questions, I welcome them.
So did you say eighty-six spots, Shannon, roughly?
Correct.
And on that survey that we did take already, so eighty-one families said they would use it, right?
That's probably more than the eighty-six spots.
Well, and if we only had three hundred people respond to that survey, would.
And I do believe that survey also included people that may not have had children.
Yeah, I think I touched on this last time, like if you took the survey, you had to answer that question. By, by my own mistake, right?
Eighty-one said that they would.
Yeah.
I'm just, I, like you said, to, to limit that possible chance for being over budget right away.
I know we're going to be discussing this more, but I'm just really concerned about the capital outlay for a project like this. It's, it's a, it's a lot of mine, um, when we've got money issues, right? So where should our focus be as a district? Is, uh, I have a lot of doubts about the liability of this and also competing against private businesses.
And to follow up on public comment too, like how can, how can we get something out there in the next, before we have to make a decision to get the community involved? Taxpayers, who will don't have kids who are paying for it.
In terms of like a survey of?
Yeah, survey.
Yeah. Asking, what, what do you see that looking like? We.
Does a, does a community want to pay for it? Just to, um, I don't know if it'd be, uh, a mailer sent out, if people would see that? Or it'd be an email for everybody in the district?
The district for sure.
Okay.
Yep, yeah, and I didn't know if you meant greater community.
Oh, just the district.
Oh.
Whoever's paying.
No, hold on, the district, families?
No, taxpayers.
You're talking the whole?
Yeah.
All taxpayers and?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Who would be?
Thank you.
No, I, I get it too. I, I mean, if we're going to ask for whatever, seven hundred thousand dollars, that's a big ask for people. I, I agree and I, I hear the hopes of that it would fund itself and that that would hopefully bring people in sooner and that would keep people here. I know that was kind of your, how do you gauge that?
Yeah.
So I.
Well, and I think with that, if that was something that went out, like here's the intention of it, you know, here's the thought behind it. Kind of to Steve saying other, like, private, has there been any other, has there been any talk with other daycares in town?
I attempted and didn't get a response.
You know, because I, I think as a competitor, but trying to build community ties.
So, um, there are only four licensed daycares in town. One is a center and three are home providers.
Yeah.
Everybody has waiting lists because the community does not have enough childcare spots for the parents that need them. Um, so in terms of competition, I don't see it as being a direct competition. If they can't take more children.
Right.
You know, they're, they're not out anything and, and we would be able to help be a service to those families that, that need care right here in Somerset. Um, I've talked to several families that are leaving the community because they don't have childcare, you know? So from that standpoint, um, you know, I'm aware that there's four that are licensed.
How about the, and I know you can't foresee the future, but just when you say ten full-time staff in a daycare, you know, setting, I know it's hard to find, find staff in general. I mean, do you think that that's possible?
Well, part of the thing is, is if, if we were going to, um, be full in every single room, which was those numbers that I had said, um, and just figuring out what we would need for staff to do that, um, we wouldn't take that many kids till we had enough staff, staff to support it. So that would also fluctuate cost. You know, so that's why I said it's not black and white, because everything fluctuates based on number of kids that need care, based on number of staff that I have. We are required to follow state licensing guidelines. And so there are specific guidelines on how many children per staff we can have. And so, you know, if I have one staff person in the baby room, I can only have four babies. I can't have eight. When I get to that sixth one, I need another staff person, uh, those kinds of things. So there's a lot of pieces that are moving.
Is it uncommon for daycare centers, um, for teachers in daycare centers to get benefits? Or is that common?
I would say school, the school ones that are providing daycare, um, there are several that are giving full benefits because their staff are working twelve months a year, eight hours a day. There are others that are not.
But it is a practice that is, is happening.
Can we, can we review the Fund eighty cost for the first initial year, second year? Did we go over that last time? I mean, I just want to be clear on what those costs are.
The one. Does that go slide?
Yes, when we transferred in the Fund eighty, what's that cost?
Yeah, it's on, yes, on thirteen.
So.
So that would be the?
Forty dollars per hundred thousand, so if somebody has a three hundred thousand dollar, three times forty, forty-nine, correct? So it's a hundred and twenty dollars.
For the one, for the one-time cost of that, correct?
Dave, do you want to speak to any of the tax stuff?
I guess I, I did look at the, uh, the Department of Revenue estimates for counties that they released last.
Excuse me, before you, um, continue, I, people say all the time that they can't hear you. So if you could come up to the podium so that we get it on the video, that would be great.
Absolutely. Thanks, Lauren. So mic right here. I don't have a lot to update on this. I, I was saying, I did, um, look at the Department of Revenue estimates for counties, for property value, uh, growth, equalized values for the district, uh, that they released last week. And we can use those to get a good estimate of what the district, uh, property values will be that is then released in October to us. So it's not the exact number, but it's pretty close based on the proportion, uh, of each municipality that's within the district. So just kind of doing some math, getting a close estimate. We've been using an, an increase of eight and a half percent, uh, property value for the mill rate. And our estimate right now is about eleven and a half percent. So it's not a huge change. It'll make the, those numbers a little better. That's the mill rate update.
Still taking it in, I think it's. I think it's a big ask. Our kind of bears.
Only thing I know is. I don't know what the average home price is in our district, but I'm guessing three hundred thousand might be conservative. So per type four, that's, yeah, a hundred and sixty per type here.
One, one year. And, um, my understanding from talking with other, um, school board members and districts that have this, they recoup this cost down the road, correct? So, for example, in, I think it might be St. Craig Falls, I talked with several people. But, um, they recouped their initial investment in like four years, I believe. And it is such a huge success that I, they're opening a second center. Right?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And it's now a money maker for their district.
Right.
Yeah, I guess initially when I saw the presentation last time, I looked at, we're going to ask people to put seven hundred thousand out and then we're going to lose money on this in hopes that we're getting people here to boost our open enrollment or get people here first. I, I can't, you know, that was tough to swallow, but, you know, to know that they're making money in St. Craig Falls or that we, you know, you're kind of being conservative here, you know, setting our fees. That, that's more comfortable, I guess. But again, I mean, I understand it's a big ask upfront. And I don't know what other people had, I don't know what St. Craig Falls asked to outfit their space or what other people have asked.
Yeah, it's been a mix. You know, some have, have built brand-new buildings just for this as a part of that initial layout. Um, some are doing exactly what we're doing of just some construction to try to transform something you already have into something that will fit to meet code. You know, one of the districts ended up, because their, uh, enrollment has decreased enough, they had some empty classrooms and empty space in one of their elementary schools. So they kind of transformed those spaces into, you know, so it's a mix in terms of how people have went about this, I guess.
Based on, based on what I know about the industry, childcare industry, um, I mean, obviously, there's no guarantees, but I am very, very confident that we will be full with a waiting list. I just feel like that is, there is such a huge need in St. Craig County, period. And there's so very little options here in town, um, that I, I wouldn't be standing up here telling you that I think we should do this if I didn't honestly believe that I think we would be filling our spots, you know? But that's just me, am I?
Well, I think we've talked about open enrollment and trying to get people here sooner and not go to Hudson right off the bat or New Richmond or wherever to start school because, you know, they have daycare there, then they start school because of bringing their kid to that daycare in that area. I mean, people are coming here to bring their kids to here, to this building, and then drop them off at that school. I mean, I get how it could turn this, and we've, we've asked for how do we maybe help open enrollment, I think. I think it's a positive step. I, I don't know who could look at that initial investment maybe and see what we. I, I don't know who could look at that initial investment maybe and see what we can do and then possibly add things later. I, I don't know, I don't know enough about filling out a daycare, what we need versus what we want or, I think. And maybe another one is, it sounds like maybe even some type of survey, I don't know how we go about getting more community input.
Would require a lot of education to put out about what exactly we're talking about and what the impact would be before I think that we could get, um, informed responses to the survey.
I don't feel comfortable making a decision about that.
About the survey or the?
Just.
Or the.
I would have to talk to her. Well, the decision, well, whatever the.
Well, there's no more, or action on this.
I know, I know, I know, I'm not too many.
I mean.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Steve. So it's not just the, the money and the outlay, it's the fact that we're competing with private businesses. Churches could be involved with this, I would think, and we've got three in town. That seems like a logical place to go, um, to work with that, you know, a nonprofit organization like that, a faith-based organization, um, rather than a school of revenues.
Are you saying that they have daycare in town?
I'm saying that maybe you approach the churches in town if there's such a need, you know? They've got space, they've got empty classrooms, I would think.
They would be sitting in a position to have to do exactly what we're doing though, so I don't know. I don't know, I'm just.
Well, then it's more or less the belief system doing, is, is a school the answer for everything, uh, the school district? I mean, we have private business, we have home daycares. If there's a big need, you would think outside of the district, there's solutions. That's just my.
And I think, I think it's a great thing to bring up. What I can tell you from the data that I've been getting and things of that, just emails and things that we get, is the whole state of Wisconsin is in dire need of childcare, period. It doesn't matter where you live or, or any of that. There are not, there are a lot of providers that have gotten out of the profession, which makes it really difficult for working families. So, um, it is, it's, it's a need across the state, not just in this community, but, yeah, it's a thing.
Yeah.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, we're talking about this right now, Shannon, because we kind of came, came to you saying, what are other things we can do? What are other things we can do as a district to try to get more enrollment, try to get more people here, try to help? I mean, and I, I agree with lots of the things being said, this is, it's a lot, it's asking, but I mean, I commend you for coming up with an option. You know, it, it might not be the, the best option, but I, I mean, I think it's definitely something that, it, it took a lot of time, like, there's a lot to this, it's a lot just to start. And I think it's not just that we're providing daycare, it's that that's going to, in hopes then, increase enrollment, help keep staff that have young children. I would like to, is there any data that we could get for districts that are already having this? I know we're talking about St. Cray Falls, that, you know, we've talked to people, but any like actual numbers as far as what they've seen? And that's asking.
We toured. I toured five, which are within an hour from us, um, and spoke with their directors, some of which, I should say, most of which did not have, it would need to be something that came from Shannon in terms of a question from a superintendent to a superintendent, because not all of the directors are involved in the budgeting piece of it.
Right.
What kind of data are you looking for?
More so, I mean, compared to what they would have put down for initial costs and running fees and then what they're getting for, um, money coming in, you know, I just, and I think maybe that's probably hard to necessarily, and then it's hard to measure, okay, someone's staying in the district. I mean, some of those things are, are tough, but I think just, I don't know.
I mean, it's paying for itself and it's a service, again, that we're offering, community, that it sounds, and like I said, I've been told to them, we don't have enough people, they're going elsewhere. If we can provide that service, you know, at the school, I think that's a good thing to do, offer. I mean, what, so when would you need something from us or what do you need from us? You know, by when, obviously we need more input, we need more information, but like, when do you need?
Well, I think we're looking at putting this on the next meeting for either recommended approval or not, if it would run through fund eighty.
So the opportunity to levy for it this year.
Right.
Is in October. And I think to clarify a little bit of what you're asking, the, you know, the upfront cost probably is different in other districts than here, whether they build or whether they had space. But here specifically, it's per code, it needs to be sprinkled and the classrooms need to have exterior door access. So that's what the majority of that cost is based on, um, for this building. And so I think you did, you know, just recapping your discussion, it sounds like, you know, the startup cost, that's a big question. That's something that you need to consider, um, and supplement with whatever information you need provided by us. I'm hearing that if you look at the higher end of the St. Cray County fees, you'll see that, that pretty much covers what we're expecting as a deficit. So if you're saying off the bat, be self-sufficient, then the fees would be high, which is an option, absolutely. And on the expenditure side, we look at how can we staff this maybe where it's not ten full-time? What are the options on the staffing side to decrease this expenditure? What are the options on the revenue side to charge fees higher? You know, and I, I can't speak to whether or not that impacts demand or enrollment, but staffing is proportional to enrollment. You wouldn't hire ten people or fifteen, uh, if you had one classroom worth of students. So I guess the point is, the big upfront cost is kind of hard to change. The ongoing operational, um, is flexible. Based on those factors, they, they could be at the higher end, uh, for the county for fees charged, but that's an option.
So. So are we looking for some information, Shannon, from you, from other districts of maybe how long, what they're making on this? And when they started making the money possibly? Is that something you can?
Yeah.
Look in to find out? Um, see maybe some additional, what their upfront costs were, just to have to see when they were paid off? Any other information people want? If we're looking, so you said, what, what meeting in October?
Well, Bruce, I should also just be real clear about this. If they're making money, right, and they're paying it off, this is all the money stayed in fund eighty. So it could be used then to expand and create more space and expand the program. Uh, but it can't be used for, you know, operations or for sports or for anything else in the district.
Like, could be part of the money in fund eighty.
Yes, it, it stays in fund eighty.
It has to.
But you know, you set your, you set your number.
Right.
So it's money in, money out. I thought that's one of the other things I read, well, fund eighty is supposed to be money in, money out, not a big surplus.
Another savings at home.
Yeah.
So like if you're, you maybe would not increase fees, right, to get that more in line with the area or, or whatever the case, but it, um, yeah, you can't fund other things.
So you couldn't technically pay off your initial investment, is that what you're saying?
Right, there's no way to pay that to anything else.
Okay. What else is, do we want? So when, when was the date? Sorry, when was the date?
Uh, it's our last meeting in October.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
Uh, I was curious how detailed the information we have on the eighty-one interested? Because if there's eighty-two-year-olds, you know what I mean? What's the spread on age on that? Do we, we know that?
No, not based on how the, it was an anonymous survey.
Doesn't that make any difference?
October wouldn't be our only shot at this. If somebody wanted to try it for referendum, they could do that now, November too.
Who wanted a referendum for this?
It's all you.
Then they can't argue with you. Okay, so some additional information, is that clear for the next meeting?
If you'd like some information from other districts that currently have similar programs, timeline from what was their initial investment? And how long it took to either break even or potentially start gaining revenue?
Yep. Yeah, I don't, um, and then, well, now we can't say money, but, um, I guess how would we, would be worth another survey again? I, I don't know how, how we send one out to all community, how that typically works.
That would be our district newsletter mailing list. And I don't know off the top of my head how much it costs to, um, it wouldn't be as much as the district newsletter, I would think, because it wouldn't have to be full color and it wouldn't have to be as many pages.
Like you said, the information that they're.
Or just scale it down to go to Ian's question more so to target, because the initial survey was sent out, not in the mail, correct? It was just sent out.
To the district.
Yeah.
Specifically targeting those people that sh- like showed interest to gain more.
Well, they have a way of knowing who those are, because there isn't a.
Right, but if it came out to say something to the fact, like, if you were one of those people that were interested, can you provide us with some more, more information?
Or is there another?
Yeah.
Just district-wide?
Another district-wide survey, just targeting that.
Targeting if you were, if you are someone who is interested in this program.
But to Ian's point, if you put it on referendum, people will just, if they don't have the information, they might just check it out without knowing all of it.
Right.
And the other thing about sending out an email survey to just those who are currently enrolled in the district, because those are the only emails we have, it would go up through infinite campus or something like that.
Yeah.
Then you are missing all the young families.
Yeah.
Who don't have kids in school yet.
Right. So we need some good information sent out about what this is. Two of these families, it's on that flyer, yeah. And I think something that I have to go out relatively quickly. And then, so that we can kind of review those results again, I guess, before we would say, yes, we want to approve it at the end of October. Because the community is saying, yes, this is something we support, we could fill it or.
Okay, that's a big ask.
I know, I.
So.
I feel like to accurately get information and to create a flyer and to make sure it's out, that's in a, in that timeline, I feel like is not really possible.
So we're talking about mailer, is that correct? A flyer?
Well, I guess the only issue with the mailers I come back to is we have, you know, we've done them for the referendum and we get, you know, pretty minimal feedback on those. So I don't know, I, granted, I want to, I want to hear from people if we would get back. I don't know what the percentage is, like eighteen percent or twenty percent we get back. It's better than nothing, but at least we get community input back.
Well.
Do you have something?
I was going to say a referendum is open vote, right? As fund eighty is, there's no vote for the public. So I think there, that's, there's a chance for a lot of heat to come, come down towards this, to us. If we don't communicate the cost involved, cost benefit analysis, it's really that simple.
So what would, what would, eventually when all this revenue comes in from this, what would that? How do you shuffle that toward other things in fund eighty and what would those things be? What would that look like? I guess I'm not sure of the questions, do you think?
Uh, so fund eighty can carry a fund balance. Typically in the past, uh, it's gone up and down. Sometimes, some of the things we've tried previously is to start, um, community ed program and that typically loses money. And in the past, with support by school aged care, kids club, um, revenues. I think typically districts, if they didn't have some other thing that they're trying to do, they would not necessarily continue to build their fund balance. They would say, well, we don't need to increase rates. Costs generally go up every year, but they would slow down their revenues most likely. So lacking some purpose, uh, some objective, um, generally we wouldn't just keep accumulating revenue and holding on to that.
Could, could we pay down the items that we were planning on putting in there? Could we like decrease the fund eighty ask and pay like SRO or those footlegs? Those could be covered to that.
It's not, so fund eighty is the umbrella. It's not, um, you know, segregated within the fund, that things must remain in a specific program, so yes, we could do it.
Is there a maximum you can raise through fund eighty per year or how does, how does that work?
Uh, it's community and board discretion, gentlemen.
And this amount, since it's a one-time, it's a startup, it all has to be in year one? Like, there's no way to give this amount to say, we're going to do half this year, half the next year?
I think.
Just out of curiosity, I mean, because I.
I think just based on.
As we talk about the number.
Where the, the cost estimate came from, the, the work that's being done, it's big costs are sprinkling and putting doors in. So I don't know if that would be, Bruce, maybe you know, is that something new in two years rather than one?
Going in.
I.
I mean, you could, it would just take longer to open up.
Yeah. Which then you're.
And, and the, the cost probably would remain the same.
So what does it take to get a referendum question on, you know, can we still do that or not?
There's a deadline, I can't remember when it does happen.
Well, I believe it's passed.
Yeah, it stays over. Is it?
I can double check, but.
Okay, well, plus someone has something else, things to leave us. I can't keep asking around people's thoughts, I don't know. I don't know what we want to do with a survey, if anybody has any, not clearly on it.
Well, Shannon, what are your thoughts on it?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think it's a little bit of a short timeline in terms of kind of putting together flyers and mailers and things like that. I mean, if that's the directive we can, for sure, I think at the very least, you know, sending something out district-wide, at least as a start, would be good.
And when you say that, you mean like through email, infinite channels?
Yes, mhm, at least as a start. I mean, we, I don't know, we could put something if we're, um, looking at kind of greater community, we could put something. I know this doesn't reach everyone, which is the hard part of, you know, on Facebook or website and kind of file people there to take it. You know, putting out a mailer, and what's your, what's your estimate on?
Could we put something in the, I mean, quick turnaround, but in the calendars that go on?
I guess I don't know, if we're going to do it, I'd prefer it was a standalone, probably, but.
I can get some racism things.
Let's see what you can come up with before the next meeting about putting out a flyer or a, and then let's, we're not getting something out too in the scoop or through the, at least through like district families to get more info.
Because we got many more families through that.
Ages and who would use it and.
Mhm. So how many children and the ages?
You know, if we can get some of that in September already, then, you know, if we can have some pulled together. You know, if we can get some of that in September already, then, you know, if we can have some pulled together by the end of September and. Two weeks back, we should be able to get it by October, and if we're not making that ask until the twenty first. At least we have some community input, you know, other than what we're asking, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
An option? Looking good? Okay, uh, Shannon, superintendent goals?
Uh, yeah, um, so they are linked, um, I will. Just wanna take a pass at the paper copy as well, um. Okay, um, all right, so what you have in front of you are, um, after kind of going through. Um, looking at again strategic plan, kind of what we've got going this year, some focus areas, um, three specific areas that I will focus on, uh, in terms of. Collecting evidence, reporting out to board, so I'll start with, uh, goal one, uh, is of course the strategic plan, um, that's obviously one of the biggest components of my work. Um, looking at implementing all of our year two action steps, so you can see underneath there some measurables, uh, identify the year two action steps, which actually I've already done at our, uh, previous meeting. There are twelve of those, uh, collecting evidence on those action steps with a goal of a hundred percent completion of each of those. And then present information to the board regarding progress of these action steps at least three times per year. Uh, goal two and three are a little bit more student achievement, uh, focused, so this year will be the first year of our required implementation of Act Twenty. Uh, which is being implemented statewide, uh, so supporting that implementation and overseeing that implementation specifically in our elementary school. Um, also with having a new curriculum director, that'll be important to support that work with her as well. Um, so attending building and apartment meetings regarding Act Twenty and collecting evidence on all these things, attending internal and external trading regarding Act Twenty. Uh, reviewing grades K three, required universal screener performance data, uh, so technically starting in January, we're required to give a universal screener. Um, we are actually gonna try to implement that at the beginning of this year, so we can at least have a, a run through before January, but helping to analyze and review that data. And then presenting information to the board regarding Act Twenty at least two times per school year, um, so you might remember. You know, the training for this actually started last year with our staff, uh, going through half of the top ten teacher tools. Uh, this year will be the second half of that, and then again, implementing all of the, what I would consider lengthy requirements for Act Twenty. Um, not only the training, but again, uh, the universal screener, we're prescribed which exact screener we have to use. Um, looking at that data and then, uh, creating plans for students that score below a certain threshold as well, um, so there's. A lot that'll be happening with Act Twenty, so, um, overseeing that, which again has a direct, uh, tie to student achievement, and then. Goal three looks very similar to, I've had this goal the last two years, um, but I think it's important to continue to have some accountability. With the biweekly meetings with principals and directors, reviewing their goals, ninety day plans or individual goals, evidence of progress. Um, that second bullet point is something I added in this year, presenting information to the board regarding the progress of the ninety day plans for each building at least two times per year. Uh, which is something I talked about when our, uh, principals and directors were here last meeting. Attending at least one staff meeting per month and then weekly building classroom walkthroughs, so, um, continuing to evaluate what's happening with our curriculum, our instruction. Um, and how that relates to student achievement by working closely with our principals and directors, so. Those will be the three things that I will specifically be collecting evidence on, of course, everything I do in a year can't be summed up just in these three goals, obviously, but. Those will be the three, um, areas of focus in particular. Want to come?
So I think if it does have questions about them, you would like them just to follow up with you.
Great, yeah.
Two weeks or something. Already questions now, I guess, I'm sure they're just kind of, so. Do you follow up with Shannon in the next two weeks? Looking good?
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, um, any questions about the financial reports? Okay, uh, moving on to the next item, for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, budget update, compensation, recommendation, discussion, possible action, date.
Thanks. So I'll start with a little bit, um, of budget discussion and specifically, uh, we'll review. Uh, how last year ended up twenty three, twenty four, uh, and so we'll go, uh, from the website again. New website, looking good. Page looks a little different, financial reports are still up top on the right. The, uh, quarterly budget to actual reports, um. We have ten years of these now. So our final one for last year, we'll jump into that. And, uh, don't hesitate to ask questions at any point, I'm not gonna, uh, go through it too slow. It's very similar again to prior years, except what, what's the end result of the year, and we'll look at the closer examination parts for the things that we kind of keep track of on an ongoing basis. Uh, you can see, I summarize what's in it, what's in the numbers, if you looked at the end of the report, you can see the cash flow of the last month always jumps up because there's. Things that are booked on expenditure and revenue, um, that are either just booked on paper or they're. Yet to be paid payrolls or they're yet to be received, uh, revenues, so that all ends up in June, that all goes into this, um, our final numbers. The numbers we talked about throughout the report don't include the transfer from Fund Ten to Fund Twenty Seven. Um, I mentioned it at the very end again in the summary, where when you do include that, we're at ninety eight percent of ex- of, of budget for Fund Ten expenditure. Uh, excluding that here, you can see the number this year versus last year, ninety seven point seven percent on the expenditure side. Uh, some of the breakdown by summary codes sorted, sorted by the, the expenditure, I have some notes below. Um, if you have any questions, let me know, some of the, some of the higher percentages and some of the lower percentages, uh, are a result of. A budget being allocated to one area but broken down and coded to other areas, so there's a fair amount of that interplay going on, um, in our coding, uh, in our budgets year over year. Here's the final pie charts, the budget, and then where we ended up. Um, and I should step back and emphasize again, this is, um, really good estimates, it's not final yet, we had our auditors on site. The last week of July, first week of August, the audit is ongoing, uh, and they will have their report done in December. Um, and I report our numbers to D P I at the end of September, so it's ongoing, these are really good estimates, it's how we should think about this. Here's Fund Ten even more summarized and compared to the prior year with a bar chart. By object, uh, the what of the expenditure. Um, and again, I have a couple notes up top just about how budgets are allocated and where they can end up being expended. Um, for instance, capital objects here ended real low, but that doesn't mean that that wasn't expended, most of that was within IT codes, and this is just an example of one area. Um, but they didn't, in their plan, they weren't spending it on, um, equipment this year, it was more on services, so. They still ended up very close to their, their budgeted amount of expenditure, it was just coded differently. Here's our closer examination. Uh, you can see, this is a good, a good example of, there's good examples under budget, there's good examples over budget, I have some notes, uh, regarding that. What you see there down below, um, obviously the, the winter was very unique this last year. Um, saved a fair amount of money on the gas and overheat, the electricity, um. I think partially was, um, less being used once construction started in the elementary, for instance. Uh, snow removal, we still had some snow and we still had some cost, though it was, if you look at last year, our record high, it was much different. You see the department budgets, the E C C P tuitions, legal is, is back on track now, I would say, to closer what we expect the last couple years. Uh, transportation ended high, subwages ended high, uh, in all categories. Uh, and the H R A ended high, though, yeah, the trend did slow down a bit, you can see that's this purple line here. Um, and you can see, this is the H R A budget in blue and actual in red since twenty twelve, thirteen. Uh, it's been tightened up, you can see a note, over the years, we've tightened up the, uh, utilization percentage, which means. How much do we think the district will pay, what percentage of plans will be using the full amount of their H R A, and we reduce that over, over time as we see what. What happens, and we talk to J Connor especially about what to expect. Um, and it's been a good trend, except for the last two years, uh, both years over budget after a, a number of extremely low years in a row, so. Uh, obviously there can be some variance here over here. Special ed ended a little over budget. Um, generally, there were some additional services, uh, for students. That were a little higher than last year, and also during the year, a bus route was added. Um, and that was a partial year, but the bus routes are expensive and that wasn't budgeted. Again, the chart and the ratio, and the revenue side, district ended at one hundred and one percent point zero, uh, of budgeted revenues. Um, interest income again was, was higher than expected, uh, it was sustained high rates throughout the year. Um, and open enrollment tuitions into the district, uh, were a bit higher than expected as well. Cash flow timing, this is the, uh, month over month, and you can see, as I mentioned at the start, the, in June, where we book all those entries for revenues and expenditures. And then we can see cumulative, and again, there's that, that big month at the end, but this is where we are, the snapshot at the end of June. That's where, uh, that's where we sit, and we had budgeted a balanced budget. With expenditures coming in under and revenues coming in over, we ended with a surplus budget. Um, and we'll talk about this again, or we'll at least see it, um, at the budget hearing on September nine. And we'll talk about it again right now in another format, um, I'm gonna give you a breakdown. Uh, breakdown budget update that has a preliminary budget, and this is, um. This is interesting, I guess, in the timing sense, because this has to go to the paper, uh, this week. To be published in time for, um, our statutory requirement to be in paper in advance of our meeting. So what you're seeing now is what's gonna be in the paper and at the budget hearing. And there you can see, on the side with the budget update. You can see the actual column, and there's, uh, on top expenditure, on bottom revenue, and then the net, the surplus, uh, a little over six hundred thousand. So in regard to the agenda, I'm still talking about, uh, budget update. Uh, the column that says preliminary budget twenty four, twenty five is the budget as it stands now with our snapshot of everything that we have. Um, as recently as we know it, I think some things to keep in mind. Uh, the September count has a big impact on what we do. Because we use, year over year, we use the same pupil count, that's what we do when we're budgeting. We have not done a demographic study, that is our practice, and so. If there are more students, more F T E, the revenue limit calculation goes up, there's more revenue, uh, and if there's less, uh, fewer students, then it goes down. Additionally. We've seen a fair number of open enrollment applications, uh, in, uh, and not as many out. Um, so the people that, the students that are in or out, last year would likely remain the same for this year. Uh, and applications doesn't mean that students are coming or going necessarily, but it means they applied, and so. We will find out after this count also where we sit with that, because built into this budget on the expenditure side is a trend of increasing cost that's built in. Uh, for the open enrollment out, uh, and additionally, uh, the trend on the revenue side. So. There's still information, um, to be, uh, to be gained and learned, and that will be applied to this budget going forward. This is not, uh, what it will end up looking like in October when we adopt the original budget, this is a snapshot, like we've talked about. In previous meetings for previous preliminary budgets or previous check-ins, uh, this is our snapshot right now, this will appear in summarized form, even more summarized than this. In the paper, and then it will be in more detailed form, uh, at the budget hearing, we'll, we'll look at all funds actually. Uh, to see how they all ended up and what it looks like going forward. Any questions about the budget side? I should also highlight, you can see the preliminary budget column ends at a net four twenty three right now, this. This budget document does not include yet any compensation change, it does include the S R O and middle school athletics and activities being in fund eighty rather than a fund ten. You don't have any questions, you can turn your sheet over, uh, and we've added a couple co- a couple, um, lines to the. The compensation numbers that we talked about previously. Just for your awareness, to see what steps and percentages cost, these estimates are for, uh, staff for Fund Ten and Twenty Seven, that's staff within the revenue limit. Uh, any of the options above steps only also include the percentage increase for all of our new hires, as they're placed on the schedules, so the schedule changes in percentage, they also get that percentage increase.
So is this calculated across the board for every educator?
I'm sorry, I said.
It's across the board for every educator, the percentage compensation?
The percentage on the right hand side, uh, that's based on wages only for returning staff.
Okay.
All staff?
Yes.
So you're saying this would be whatever percentage you're increasing the whole grid plus whatever step increase they would get?
That's on the, the left hand side column, yes, steps and then percentages on the schedule. And then the impact wages only is the percentage on the right hand side. For returning staff, year over year, this is what we're seeing, that increase in percentages, this is the, uh, common practice for calculating that percentage across the state for comparison.
But that's just an average of all the teachers?
Correct, yes, yes.
Some people are obviously.
Some will be, yes, so for instance, teachers, um, early on in their careers would see a higher percentage than teachers who have been here and are on the top step of the salary schedule. We see a lower percentage than the average.
So can you help, help me out a little bit, so for the last five years, where are we at as far as increases go? Staff increases, I mean, so, you know, I mean, just going back a couple years, I just wanna understand.
Uh, last year was, um, variable, it was steps. And four percent for support staff and supervisory support staff, it was steps and one percent for teachers, uh, and it was only steps for admin.
Did you say one percent for teachers?
Yes, steps and one percent on the schedule.
Alright.
And the year prior.
So then that was like a what percentage, like on the right side, for teachers, like, because I asked the same question, Steve, it was two point four percent.
Two point four.
Yeah, we got this information the last time.
We got this information the last time, and I wrote it down. When you gave a report, you said for admin it came to 1.5, for certified staff it came to 2.4, and for supervisory, or support staff and supervisory support staff, it came to 5 percent.
Both of those, last two were over 5, but yeah, it was certified teachers, 2.4, yep.
Support staff was 5.4.
Four.
And supervisory support staff was 5.1.
It's a, I'm sorry, Dave, can you cut you out? Do you have the numbers for the other previous years too, or do you-
The prior year was steps and 3 percent, and I remember I thought I had the prior two before that, but I couldn't, obviously look.
So steps plus 3 percent was 22-23 school year?
Can you remind me the, I'm sorry, jumping around a little bit, the, just the rough number for middle school athletics, and like what column that would, or what fund that would go under?
So the amount on the expenditure side here, if you look at the budget update side of that paper, the top section, 160,000 co-curricular, I reduced that, and we're looking at $65,000 in costs being moved from the budget last year to what would not be in the budget this year. Year over year, there's some variability, so that's just looking at last year to this year. Prior years, there's some variability in some of the costs, and so the placeholder that we had for Fund 80 for the SRO and for middle school athletics was 150, with the SRO being 55. I think we're using a placeholder now, I'm using a placeholder now, 85 for the middle school athletics and activities, so a total of 140. But obviously, that's higher than what I'm moving in budget here from Fund 10 to Fund 80, because we don't want to not meet the cost in a given year. Once it started, it can be adjusted, it's not static year over year. But at the same time, costs go up generally, so... Did I answer your question?
Thank you. Are we looking for action for compensation options for tonight, and is that something that then needs to be published along with what you're publishing at this stage? Does that need to be-
Possibly, if you adopt, if you approve something tonight, possibly I can get that broken down and into the paper this week, but it might also just be in the paper like this. And it doesn't, it doesn't matter if that's the case, as long as we're talking about it and we know what the plan is. We did a similar thing last year where we adopted the original budget in October with a surplus, knowing that the intent was to use that for compensation. So it's a similar thing, last year in the paper, it was showing surplus as well.
Anybody have any thoughts on these compensation options?
So just to clarify, the left-hand column is, are the options, the steps?
Okay, steps and percent, yep. And additionally, it doesn't fit exactly, I guess, to talk about it as the agenda looks, but the third grade teacher is not included in this.
Okay.
I look at, I know we've gotten a couple emails, just I think in general, I look at the cost of living and different rises that we have across our country right now, and with, you know, everything, I look at what our budget allows. I guess I would be, can I make a motion? I would, I guess I would make a motion to both the compensation option of steps and 3 percent raise across the board for our staff.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay, then I will do a roll call vote for steps and 3 percent. Okay, I'll start with you.
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Basically?
Yes.
So logistically, we'll process this as soon as possible. Rod is really busy right now with all the open enrollment, getting everything updated for the upcoming September payroll. So as soon as possible, we'll do that, we'll communicate when it's going to apply as well, so everybody knows what's going on. But I don't know that it'll be the first payroll in September, it might be the second.
Well, that includes on back pay for when this contract starts-
Yes, that's correct.
Perfect, thank you.
And as far as in the paper, I will work to try to update this so that it matches what you've approved here tonight for what's in favor.
Thanks for putting that together, Dave and Shannon. I think that's very helpful, very detailed. Thank you.
Okay, and B on my staffing update edition of a full-time third grade position, 24-25 school year, there's a memo attached to that, if anybody's looked at that one, Shannon, you brought this up last meeting.
Yeah, so last meeting, I kind of talked about Pam and I have been monitoring the numbers, so that grade right now is sitting at 108. Again, overall, good problem to have. We have lots of new kiddos coming into the elementary school and many that want to be a part of third grade. So as I have in my memo, currently, we have four sections, which would put class sizes at 27, 28 per class, certainly not optimum for that grade level developmentally. So my recommendation is that we add a 1.0 teacher on a one-year contract just for this school year, and then we analyze numbers from that point on to determine if we still have that level of enrollment, to maintain that position, potentially moving it to full-time. But at least for now, getting somebody in there for this school year and then looking at what happens with enrollment. I have in here, and Dave kind of mentioned too, you know, we kind of see this as a separate budget item from the compensation that you just passed. You can see there, the number that we use as a placeholder, of course, this could be a little lower or a little higher, depending on who we end up getting for this position, someone brand new versus maybe someone with experience, but you can kind of see, you know, what we use at least as a placeholder in terms of the budget. So, you know, looking at, as Dave said, you know, where we ended, 23-24 with a 607, 767-85, as he mentioned, you know, we moved that into our fund balance. So essentially, we would be deficit spending out of that fund balance for this position for one year, which Dave and I both feel very comfortable with. You know, typically, where you get into trouble is if you rely on your fund balance to maintain a position or funding year after year, then your fund balance doesn't stick around very long. So we feel that we'd be able to absorb that, you know, for this purpose for one year again, and then reevaluating at the end of the school year to determine what enrollment looks like, and if it maintains or continues to grow, then this position would pay for itself essentially moving forward. But 27, 28 in a class for third grade is not acceptable in my opinion. So again, good problem to have, we've got lots of kids coming in.
So last meeting, the numbers were 104 for third grade, and now we're at 108. Do you have any updates on the other grades in the elementary school?
Those were holding steady enough that we weren't looking at adding additional staff, so-
I was wondering if any have decreased.
Any what?
Have decreased.
No.
So everything's either steady or increasing slightly?
Correct. As I mentioned last time, you know, JK is something we continue to look at, it's not uncommon, even after, you know, the first couple weeks in September, that we have kids trickling and JK's parents continue to enroll, so that number is still at an okay spot right now, which is why I'm only bringing forward this particular position. I wouldn't reel out, who knows, you know, a month from now, if I'm back here talking about JK, but right now, we're holding steady, but third grade is where, for whatever reason, we've had the huge influx of kids. Dave, I don't know if you have anything else to add regarding the funding component? I think I covered it, so.
Any other discussion or action on that? Anybody have a motion?
I make a motion to take the recommendation and approve adding a 1.0 third grade teacher as soon as possible.
A second?
Okay, motion to add the third grade teacher, second, all is in favor. Any opposed? Right, motion passes, and passes 6-0.
Can I have a question? Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So this will, I'm guessing, be posted tomorrow, but we don't have another meeting for, you know, two weeks to go through a personnel update, and we're looking at starting school next week. Is there a way to expedite that process to make sure that we can get this hired ASAP? If we look at third graders, excited to meet their teacher, they've been, you know, notified of a teacher, now that will change, I just want to make sure that we can get this going as soon as possible.
Yeah, so Pam will end up sending out some information to all third grade likely tomorrow, just, hey, heads up, good news, we have another teacher coming. We'll post it, so it's posted until filled, so we won't have an end date for it, basically, as people start applying, we'll start interviewing as quickly as possible. You know, if not out of the realm of possibility, that we maybe have to grab together a quick special session to approve a staff member, but we'll see how quickly. It's hard for me to say for sure until I see kind of what our applicant pool is, but-
And we can, I mean, we've approved the position, so we can start the year at least with a long assad of some type.
Yep, we've done that before too. So we have a couple things rolling on the back burner, waiting to see what happened tonight, and then we'll get moving.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, next item, items for approval, anybody up for approving any of the items under number five?
I'll make a motion that we approve the 24-25 meal prices as presented, the memo from our activities director as presented, and that we readopt Policy 5610.01, alternative expulsion hearing procedure as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Great, all, any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Alright, motion passes. Next item, two items for discussion that were brought up, be added to the agenda, just kind of addressing how we would like to move on. So I'll just start with the 23-24 staffing trends, I think you brought it up last meeting. I guess, specific things you're looking for as an input and then the board, just discuss them.
Yep, specifically special education, just noticing a lot of people, people leaving, I think there was eight people in the last two ones, and that's as far back as I went, so just curious what's going on with that.
So is that something we want? So are you looking for information from, so I think we talked a little bit about last thing, but it was kind of the end.
Yep.
So are you, are you looking for, for all from Shannon, or are you looking for some email to all of us, or are you looking for-
Any emails, Mike.
Anyone else have any thoughts on that one, just looking for the information on this, supportive, getting-
We've gotten information on this in the past, so like an update, you know, from what I remember in the past, we typically have a lot of turnover in our, especially in our special ed support staff, and part of, a big part of that reason, I believe, is because they are not full-time, and because they don't get benefits. You know, and we've heard in the past from many of our support staff about the need, I mean, that's why last year, the percentage increase for our support staff was significantly higher than for the rest of the staff, to try to address that inequity. They don't feel like it was enough still though, and you know, other districts are paying more, and so they're leaving, or they're going to other job opportunities.
I was going to say other job opportunities, I see it across the board, I think just in with special ed and support staff in general, but I think we, how can we entice them to stay, because it's not always a favorable job, and it's, and I suspect that's what we're going to, when we get an updated report.
Yep, give it up.
So, an email, this update on that?
Thank you.
Yep.
And then the second item, school board listening session with staff, and I've heard this too, and I brought it up to Shannon, and last year, we talked about it at the end of the year. I think just discussion on if people are in support of doing something like that, like meeting with just, so like the board, we would split up into two or three-person, the way I see this.
Yep.
Two or three different people, go meet at each of the schools, and then we just basically meet with the teachers or staff at that school, and just get some feedback from their thoughts, probably without Shannon or without Adam, and just kind of free back and forth of questions or concerns or thoughts they had, and then kind of a report back, and then just discussion for everybody, you know, then, you know, some type of agenda that, hey, these are the questions we're going to go through, or thoughts, and then what kind of report out we want to give. So if people aren't supportive of that, or not supportive of that, and that's what we want to kind of run through tonight, I think.
One of the things that I've been thinking about since you brought it up at our last meeting is that we are having our listening sessions every month before our regular meeting, and in the past, we have had staff come to those listening sessions, and it is an opportunity for them to talk with board members, and admin isn't there already. So I feel like we're already doing this, and providing that opportunity, and the staff have taken, taken us up on it at times when there's something that they're concerned about.
I think there might be some hesitation of some staff to actually come to a board meeting and addressing the concerns, and I think this is a good idea, I think it's a way for us to get into schools, meet with staff, and get to see if there's any issues or concerns that they might have, that they, you know, just want to come to a board meeting and so like, I mean-
Well, I'm talking about the listening sessions, not the board meeting.
Yeah, but the listening session here is before a board meeting, so it's a half hour beforehand, so. I think it's a good idea, I think.
I think it's a good idea if we, if you can get them all to, it's like the listening session, I mean, there's a lot of them that are very empty. You've got to give it a chance, right?
Yeah, me, I brought it to me, and I thought, well, too, please see what you're in.
I think it definitely could have its positives. I hear saying, you know, like concerns, but I'd rather kind of approach it more on a positive aspect versus, I don't want it to be a time that it's looked as, let's meet with board to say all the negatives. So if it could maybe, instead of being like a listening session, we, you know, that we
Um, so if it could maybe, instead of being like a listening session, we, you know, that we attend a staff meeting or something, and then, and then stay after, I don't, I don't know, I just, or have a set kind of, I don't want to say agenda with staff, but kind of have a set criteria, because I just, um, I, I want to respect, I want to respect all staff, um, including our, our principals and admin in that, to say, you know, we're here to, to support you, we're here as board members, um, but just kind of the way that we go about that, to make sure that it's framed correctly.
I agree, what, what do we think we want, there was an out, kind of output from this meeting on this topic?
But, I almost thought you were gonna say outreach, but I mean, it's like having an outreach, where you're going there, hey, you know, bring up whatever, or nothing.
So like, one of the things we, I think we need to find out would be the time to do this, so like, it's brought up. You know, I think the beginning of the year is a little tough, maybe, so I'm not saying like, push it out later, because I think it's kind of what happened when we met on it last spring, it was like, well, let's do this, and then end of the year kind of hit, and then we just kind of let it roll, so I think, you know, we get the year started, and then maybe it's, it's brought up at some of the initial staff meeting days, like, hey, what would everybody think about board member, and would we want to do it after school? And let's pick a day, maybe that the staff, you know, want to do this, and then we say, alright, we'll sign up for those days, and each board member tries to find one that works for them. And then we kind of think, too, I, I agree, I don't want it to be a fat, finny bishop, you know, what is your admin doing that you don't like, or whatever, but like, what things could we do to come in, and we've come to other events, you know, how do we get more involved in schools, I think we've invited to things, and that's something I think about too, or things I don't even know about that we, so.
If I could just give my two cents, I think something like this has the power to be super positive. I think I've seen it work really well when there's clear expectations, all board members have a common understanding of what it is, what it isn't. Um, I would just, not today, but I'd like to know kind of what happens after the meetings. Um, you know, is it a follow-up with me, is it, you know, whatever that kind of looks like, how often are you thinking? Um, I think it can be great. My opinion is, I do think it needs to be structured in a common way, um, for it to have probably the most optimum impact, and for staff to have a good understanding of what it is, and, you know, those kinds of things, so. It doesn't have to be decided right now, but just some things off the top of my head of to iron out, but.
Could you, maybe just send out for one of your, one of your check-ins with the admin team to have them bring it up?
Yep.
And then report back to us.
Yep, so I'll put on our agenda for next week, we just had our weekly meeting today, and then we'll iron out how they bring that to staff, and getting some info from staff of ideal times of day, and that kind of stuff, and I can bring it back, I can email it, I can bring it back here, whatever, but we'll, we'll start making some progress on it, for sure. I appreciate your comment about start of the year. You know, maybe give it a few weeks, but then we can.
Just get into the year a little bit.
Yep. Yeah, I think it can be great, so. I appreciate you bringing that up.
Okay, good idea, thanks. Um, board development, follow-up, so, um, so Wozni reported back, they, they would come whenever. Um, they did have, their cost was twelve to thirteen hundred dollars right now, depending, which is in line with what we had last year, over the one session we're gonna have.
For one session?
For, for one session, yep. So they have like a, they dig into, I mean, it's a saying that it's two hours to come here.
Two hours.
Yep. So they have, I'll send it out to everybody, their proposal. They have a meeting with the superintendent and the board president, and then they have, they review all of the information that we do have already, that, uh, report outs that we did, and then they set up, you know, their training off of that, and then they, you know, they get travel time to come. So I'll send that to everybody, so you have it. And then, I guess, out of that, set up the day that we want to do that, um, have that meeting. In September, probably, I was thinking, right, easiest would be right after the board meeting on the twenty-third. And we could do it following that, we could move that one up to five, and we could do it right after six thirty or seven, if everyone's gonna be here at that meeting. Thoughts on that, Nate?
So I'd like to make a statement about board development. You know, it's been contentious in this room, and at times over the last month or so, just based on the topics at hand. But, um, you know, we all ran the school board, because we want to make a, uh, a difference, you know, for this district, and be part of a thriving district. But when we're elected officials, we come with different opinions, uh, we, we come with, uh, different beliefs, and I think those need to be preserved, and I think the obsession about having board development is, I, I just don't see, when you're elected to office, you know, why this is important to the team building and group efforts, and having everybody try to get on the same page, or possibly try to quell somebody's speech. So I'm not in favor of board development, I think, uh, you know, in my discussions with other school districts, they don't do this. I think we need to, we've had a lot of discussion, a lot of productivity, believe it or not. I mean, we got, we're so back full-time, we got, uh, compensation here tonight for teachers. We said no order to unconstitutional Title IX, and that took a lot of, uh, back and forth, and a lot of debate. And I think debate is healthy, I think that's what's gonna propel us forward. So to all be on the same page, and sing kumbaya, 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 that's, I'm not, I'm not a fan of, of that, uh, sorry, that's, I think, uh, as elected officials, that's not our place to be, uh, doing board development. I, you know, for staff members that are employees, that's different. So that's, that's my opinion.
Twelve hundred's kind of steep.
I don't disagree. Believe it, I'm trying to work on our press as well with them. I agree the same, it's, it's a lot, but, I mean, Steve, we can have disagreements, we're gonna have disagreements, we have disagreements all the time, that's part of being on the board, but I guess it's how we interact during those discussions, and that's what I think we need to work on. It's, it's not just the disagreement, I, I'm not gonna try to make you agree with every word that comes out of my mouth, that's, I, I know that, but.
Yeah, so I'm just saying robust debate is good, and to listen to our parents and taxpayers, um, that's huge. I think at times we get lost in the weeds, and we, we go off track, and we forget about who's paying the bill. Um, you know, we need to run this as our school district as a business. We need to look at ways to, uh, stop the bleeding as far as the one point four million that's going out to the Wisconsin DPI. These are important things, and when we listen to our community, that's the best development that we can all have here, is listening to our taxpayers and parents. That's the best board development that any one of us can have.
And I think we all do that, I just don't think we all listen to the same parent, or hear from the same parents, which is also okay. I mean, there's a lot of people vote in these elections, and there's a lot of people who vote for certain people and vote for other people, and I don't think it's a pretty tight margin, so there's a lot of people who I think have a vested interest in this school.
But when you win a race, you win a race, that's because of the issues.
And I'm just saying, there's a lot of people in this district who voted for you, Steve, I agree, but there's a lot of people voted for all of us, and there's a lot of people that I talked to who have certain thoughts and opinions, and if I share those, that, that's okay. And if you share the thoughts and opinions, the people voted for you, that's okay as well. But then it's, how do we then function outside of this room, because once we make a decision, you know, that's a board decision, and you can have your opinion, but we gotta move on to the next item, the next topic, that's a team, we don't have to vote the same way, but we also have to, if I'm working with somebody, I might not agree with them at every decision they make, but once that decision is made, we all need to be running in that same direction. And we can't have people going off and still trying to run things the way they want to, when the whole group has said, this is the direction that we're going, I might not agree with it, and I think it might be better the other way, but this is the, this is the will of the group, and this is the best for the group. But, that's all.
It just comes back to my point, is you're trying to get certain members, and I'm talking about myself here, to calm down and not have the opinions that they have.
I have not said that once, I've, I am open to your opinion, you can bring your opinion, whatever you want. So, so Steve, just hold on a second. I just like, so, do you want, you talked this Title IX, so I'm on the, the end that was not for tabling Title IX. You have heard me run around and bring this up to everybody and their brother, and speak out everywhere saying, we need to bring this back on the agenda, no, our board made a decision, and, and that's the decision that I'm going with, and if anybody asks me what we're gonna talk about, I say, when it has to be brought up again. I'm not bringing it up, so I'm not.
I understand, what I'm saying is, we recently had an election.
Really? Every time, we know when there was an election, Steve, okay, we know the election, no one threw it. My gosh, every time.
I, yeah, I agree.
And to your point, Bruce, all of us were elected.
Yeah.
Well, that's very true. But, problem is, I've heard things that are unjust, I didn't want to bring any of that up, okay? But we're taking it to the next level here for some reason, okay? I'm trying to be positive about this, every time I bring up elections, because we were elected to office, alright, that speaks for itself, that's what board development is, we need to listen to our constituents, and that's all I'm trying to say, okay?
I have something to add, boss. Um, I was just looking through the bylaws, and I've noticed that we don't have anything for how meetings are and I just think that we could probably do well with maybe a policy that lays out Robert's rules.
I didn't find it, does anybody know?
No, it's on the top, it's Robert's rule.
What, to the agenda?
Yep, right here.
Why are we not following this? Why am I not, when I want to speak, why am I not saying, Mr. President, and then you say, Danielle? Why, why are we not doing that? I think we should be doing that.
So you already did look at this, then?
No, I, I'm, I'm watching other board meetings, uh, from other districts, and.
Ours are definitely more.
The respect is greater, I think, because of following that, and I think that we need to do well to follow that. Maybe we could get that with, um, our board development.
I agree, and I, I guess, I've run through these and realized, yes, we don't do many of these, because they haven't been done since I've been on here as official as.
Steve, I agree with you, I don't think that team building and everyone on the same page, um, I think if anything, and I, and I voiced this the last time, that if we're gonna do, do it, I think we all do need to be on the same page. I, I, we all need to be, not on the same, we all need to be open to board development, because when I do look at the price, and if not, everybody's on board. However, I'm gonna go back to our notes from the last meeting, and we made a motion to have a Wozni consultant work with the board to narrow down our list of items to address, and it was passed in a roll call vote. And our policy also states that once we go through something, we don't go back and re-vote on it.
Only a member who voted in the majority may, uh, bring a topic back to be.
If their mind changes.
So it's back to the original brought up, it's just talking about what day we want to do this, and we want to do it on the twenty-third, if people are gonna be able to make it on the twenty-third.
Well, I would be the one that would bring it back then, because I think we should have known the cost before we took the vote.
And I would say, I had, I did not know that's the way the board was gonna go, I had no idea, which is why I didn't have any costs, because I had no direction, so it's, it's on here now for twelve hundred, thirteen hundred, twelve seventy-five or something.
That's higher than I anticipated.
I guess we could make a motion if we're gonna have, you know, schedule, if we can't schedule a day, I guess, if someone wants to make a motion to pick a day, and, or just pick a day, then, I guess that would be, you wouldn't have it. So I guess the, the motion on tonight would be to bring Wozni in, and pick a day for them to come in and do a session.
Currently available, September twenty-third?
She is, yes.
And Shannon, based on previous years, does September twenty-third look like it's going to be a lengthy agenda typically?
No, I'd say July is our lengthiest, so.
And we've got the, uh, um, annual budget hearing as well, is that coincide with the work session, or the regular sessions?
The work session? Yep.
What day is it, the eighth?
The ninth.
So I'll make a motion that we, um, schedule a follow-up with Wozni for September twenty-third, to follow the regular session.
Is there a second?
Is there a discussion?
I have a second.
Thanks, I'm just, I'm still learning.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, discussion?
Uh, I don't think we should be taking a motion until we see the proposal.
Oh, you mean until you can mail it out?
Yep.
I guess, what do you want, just see if it's in it?
Mm-hmm, yep, just like I wanted to know the cost earlier.
Am I telling you the cost?
Tonight, but.
No, I, I swear I sent it to you before, I sent it to you, like, two weeks ago.
That was after the vote.
Right, yeah, and again, I had no, I didn't know that's the way the board was gonna go, on the, so I didn't have it so, yeah, onsite work session with the board and superintendent, bottom of the onsite. Office time review, survey results, prepare presentation for work session, create summary, and then they have the time down the wall, so it's a not to exceed twelve seventy-five at the bottom. And then she said if the two-hour meeting turns into a three or a four-hour meeting, there's no additional cost. This is a two-hour, and she's only here for an hour, she only charges us for an hour of that meeting time.
So with that, as to what Danny is saying, does it go through, I'm sorry, did you send last night?
As simple to.
So does it go through then off of the survey that we took, the areas of, that's specifically then what it focuses on?
Yep, they would, yeah, she would go through, yeah, those results, and actually take whatever direction we were really asking for. I, I told her that we had to talk about it tonight before getting back to her, but that we were looking for, any direction that would help based on the results we have. based on the results we have, where, where, where a decent starting point would be for us.
Are you good to me? So Bruce, did I hear you correctly that, um, the price did not go up if we went beyond the two hours?
Correct.
And it goes down if we lose an hour. Again, they were also looking at, cause I said the same thing. So that's kinda more expensive than I was anticipating. But it was. And again, I get it. I, I, I don't wanna waste anybody's time. We have long enough meetings and but I also think it just, hopefully I have somebody in the middle just to help us communicate a little bit and just focus on, hey, after looking at your results, this might be a good place to start as a board to work, work together or just, again, I'm not saying we have to agree on everything on the topic, but it's just working in the same outcome. Cause I think we do all have that same outcome in mind. Seven different thought process on how we think we should get there. So we have a motion, a second for the twenty-third. And again, I'll keep trying to work on the price, but it's, it's that and if we go longer, it's the same, that's the next price it would be.
I suppose it won't be as effective. They don't probably do like.
Virtual.
It's effective, yeah.
I can ask her, but we could use some stuff from the website too. They offer, they offer all this stuff. Steve, did you get the email?
What email was it? The Wosby one?
Yeah.
That you just sent out?
Yeah, just got one. Do you wanna leave the proposal or just?
I'll pass. I know how I'm gonna vote.
And, and coming into meetings, we are supposed to have an open mind. That's one of those other things.
Are you, are you talking to me right now?
Yes.
Okay.
I just, so me, considering how long you're.
Is, is, is that on the agenda? I mean.
Yeah, it's in our protocol reminder.
Okay.
And our core values.
Okay. So obviously if you people at the table have a problem with me here tonight because I don't wanna do board development. I'm sorry. I'm really sorry.
There's a motion and a second on the table. Does anybody need more time to look at the review?
Did Matt provide any feedback from us as far as the data?
No, I didn't. Okay. So we'll do a roll call vote on the twenty-third following the regular meeting. Um, Lindsay, I'll start with you.
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Ian?
No.
Steve?
No.
Danny?
The cost, no.
Bruce, yes. So three-three means if it's not, pass. Is there a cost that we would be looking for? Cause there are some other options we could bring up. If we wanted to talk about board development, um, that would be much less. If we wanted to just bring someone in, again, who wasn't watching. Okay. Um, so that, anything else to add on the policy, oh, one, four, four, five? Steve, you also had to add, I asked for that to be on here. I just had to schedule on for M1, so option two was, almost that was part of the discussion we already had.
We already discussed it, yes.
Okay. Alright, moving on to the consent agenda. Does anybody wanna make a motion on any items on the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve, um, personal update, A, personal update, one, two, three, four, and five.
Is there a second?
Also good.
Any discussion? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Um, general information, September ninth, we'll have the budget hearing and the annual meeting, uh, and the work session. Uh, and then on September twenty-third, we'll have the regular session with the listening session thirty minutes prior. And then I'll start district celebrations. Uh, Ian, you wanna start?
I guess I got nothing.
Uh, Steve?
Nothing.
Danny?
I have nothing.
I'll go just, uh, staff look back today, building. And then shout out to the elementary school team, just hang in there. Just, you got a little bit of time. Just I've talked to people from some other districts and their buildings aren't even gonna be ready by the time their school starts. And I know ours is looking close, but hang in there. It'll be, we'll be happy once, you know, probably get past Labor Day maybe, but just hang in there and keep letting people know when you need things done in your classroom, cause there are going to be things that come up on that construction that were done that you probably have questions about. So just keep bringing those up and saying. Thanks for pushing everybody to get that done and working with the people moving in and moving in the next building.
Welcome back to the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
And I know there were elementary staff here last week for many days prior to their official first day of school, uh, working on getting their rooms put back together. So thank you so much for all of your work. Um, open house coming up on Wednesday, right?
Yep.
And, uh, the music department mum sale. You can still order your mums, but it has to be done by August twenty-second by a certain time that I don't remember. But it's in the Spartan School. Do you remember, Alicia?
I don't have my hat, sorry.
Alright. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second. Steve, second. All of the favor?
Aye.
Alright. Thanks, everybody.